And we have a forum, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic, in the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Somebody move approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, pass, present it.
You want a second there? All right. The next Board of Selectment meeting will be Monday, January 28th, 2019, 5:30 here at the West Bath Town Office. We have, I have no comments. Have you any comments? Comments from the public? All righty. Then let's head into business. Business item number one, Road Commissioner of Winter Road Maintenance.
I want to add after that, whose carnival of pour the snow material, the material in this shed now? I have no idea how much sand to put in there this year, or the town people have no idea of what we're using for salt. I'd like to know who's supposed to be carnival for that.
That should be in the invoice for the sand, I think.
There's no invoice in there, and there's no slips in there for the sand we got.
So we haven't billed for it?
We paid up for it, but we don't know what we paid for. We never got a truck slip, we never got nothing.
So there's been no invoice, is what you're saying?
Correct. There's an invoice, but there's no, how do we know what we got for sand this year?
Are you saying it doesn't say that on the invoice, or nobody?
Nobody got slips or knew what was going on or anything. Last year when we got sand from Croker, every slip that came in was signed for it, counted for, and all of a sudden, this year, nothing's happening? I'd like to know where our time money's going.
I can tell with, um, can-
Who's in charge of it?
Can we check on what the invoices said?
Well, Steve's been in and talked with Julie. I really haven't been involved in that part of it, because our contract clearly states that the road commissioner has the authority to direct the contractor. And I think this is the crux of the problem, is opening up some communication and finding some clarity around who's responsible for what. And it's not just the slips that we're having an issue with. It's certainly a part of it, making sure that we have what we're expected to have. But how far does Steve's authority go? Does it mirror what's in his job description and what's in the contract? Or is it up to the contractor to decide the quality of our roads and what they provide us for information? And when is it appropriate for the selecting of the town administrator to intervene? So there's, I think, would you agree with that, Steve, that there's many issues that we need to-
Right. Aggress. For one thing, right now, we've gone up $44,000 from the last, 2017 to 2018. Now we're at $54,000 more. Where is all this authority coming for this money being spent in our town? Why is it happening like that?
We put out a bid package.
I understand I forgot our sand.
Yeah, and the, and the one bid came back more than we had originally anticipated. It was late in the season. We accepted the bid.
No, I understand that. That was great. That's exactly what you should have done. How do you know what that guy hauled in there? You know what you paid for, but how do you know what you got?
And I guess, me being that guy-
Yes.
Ben Goodall, Goodall Landscaping, we did, we were the one contractor that bid the, bid the sand, and we were awarded the work, you know, it's stipulated that we had to bring in 1,500 yards. That's what we brought in. We also did get it from, from Croker, same place. I, I don't, there was no, nothing written that said we had to provide every single load, load slip, and we just simply invoiced up invoice for the 1,500 yards and the work that we, you know, agreed to do for the amount that we agreed to do it for.
Yeah, there wasn't any stipulation in the, in the bid contract that said it.
There was the year before, and I thought you said you went with the same bid that-
It was the same, it was the same bid.
So you have no way of keeping that?
I guess we don't.
Okay. So now, we're using up salt up the yin yang out there, because nobody gives them any discretion of telling them what they can use. They can just use whatever they like. So now, we're almost up to our budget with salt. So what are we gonna do for the rest of the year to supply this stuff? I mean, who is actually moderating to what's going on with our town's budget and the way we're doing this? It seems like you guys, our town has lost control of what's going on. When we give the selectmen the permission to take over the road commissioner's job, to appoint your road commissioner and no more election, it wasn't to give you guys authority just to spend as much money as you want on projects like this, the way you're doing it. And it's crazy when you go up $50,000 in two years.
On, on what specifically?
Material we're using.
And what, aside from the price increases, what is, what specifically is your objection?
Where did all of a sudden we go from $20,000 putting sand in that building to $50,000 putting salt in that building to use? Where did that come from?
I think one of the things that happened, and I'm new, and I think our town administrator left us, and we ran up against some time restraints, and we did what we had to do. I think we can't go back and redo it. I hear where you're coming from, and I think we need to put some measures in place. But I also think that that may be a meeting between you and the town administrator on how do we, how do we recover from where we started and where we are right now? How do we hold some accountability?
Well, for me, we need to start somewhere, because I speak to Mr. Goodall, Steve, and I'm, they're doing a heck of a job. Beautiful job. Don't get me wrong, I'm not ditching their work, but we do not have the kind of budget that these guys are putting that salt up there at, the rate.
Then we need to make sure that the budget's reflected what's needed for the roads.
No, we need to make sure our contractors say that we need to put that kind of salt out there, and we need to make sure when we bid this stuff out to other people, that they know what they got to work with. You can't just all of a sudden put a bid out there, then all of a sudden, few of these guys have enough salt as they need, because they tell you they need salt. That was not in our program nowhere.
In my experience, generally what I see in winter road contracts is generally it will specify a limit for salt loads, so that, you know, the contractor is allowed eight loads of salt, or whatever number you deem appropriate. Our contract is rather open-ended.
Doesn't, it does not specify.
It does not specify, and it's not a contract that I would recommend in the future to protect the interests of the town. However, that's what we have to work with right now.
But going forward, can we say, for the rest of the year, this is your salt mixture that we are- And we need to discuss this, and we need to be frank, because frankly, there's been people that have come to me that aren't even in this room, having a concern about the salt that are also contractors. So I just want to put that up, this isn't, I didn't hear anything from Steve. I have heard from a couple of other contractors that the salt we put on these roads and the amount is way too much.
They've been coming in too. I was just letting it go, now they're just, the sand that comes to me too much. We haven't had, this probably this last storm was the worst ice storm we had. These other little dinky storms we have, we're making hot loads for them. I mean, I got slips from them showing he put 12 yards of salt out in one storm. Actually, we've never done that in our lives. All that does is make it the contractor's job a hell of a lot easier, so he don't start to spend as much time out there, and they can get away with just winding the salt to it and going scraping it off.
Well, for my-
Can I say that?
For my-
Because you say that, but I've watched you put a full straight load of salt out. Don't tell me you have a washed job. When we had, and the town was not paying for it either, was they, Chris? I would pay them. But we're still mixing it still. You say, you say that this 40 ton of salt is gone. It ain't, it's mixed in, it's up there still. We've never put straight salt on these roads. You got like one 40 ton of salt? Whatever, whatever it is. It's still there.
It's gotta stop, it's still there.
Chris, it was your boss that came to me.
Oh, no. No, I know, and there is.
I, I think we need to have some rules and recommendations or plans.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I'm not, and I'm not trying to fight with Stevie, I agree.
No, no, I'm just saying, it was your boss that came to me, so again, if we had some rules for everybody-
I'm guilty, I'm bad, he's guilty, I'm bad, we're all guilty.
You'd know what we want too, and it wouldn't be so tough on you being in the middle.
Right, well, I mean, I, I think that the whole, the whole intent of the original RFP, when you guys put the snow, snow work out to bid, to bid was, was to use, to use more salt, because that seems to be a new technique that gets safer roads and, you know, it's just a proven science. And so when we bet it, we had that in mind, and certainly we weren't dealing with Christine, but we were dealing with Adam at the time, and, you know, there were open discussions, and that was, that was the intent to use salt. You know, I guess it's, it's being implied that we're using it without good judgment. I, I would, I would certainly say that's not the case. It's also being implied that when we, we invoice for 1,500 yards of sand up at the sand bin, and there wasn't 1,500 yards, well, there was, and, you know, and I, we, we do have the slips from Croker, and we could provide those, we weren't asked to, so I mean, that's, that's a, that's a possibility. But when it does come to salt usage, I mean, what's, what's the standard? You know, I mean, and, you know, we did have some early season storms, which were unexpected in November, which, which caused some usage, and certainly we did mix salt into the, into the salted sand, and at what rate, I, I'm not sure exactly what that was, was it a 10% mix or, and is that part of the overage? Or was that part of, just, just in general, it's a salt?
I'm just, the way we're going right now is, what you guys are doing, right, I have no problem with it. But the problem is, this town does not have that kind of budget to be using that kind of salt. And that's the only reason I'm bringing this up, because I'm the road commissioner, I know what my budget is. I'm not gonna be able to do anything with our roads if we keep eating it up in salt. We did not design this snow budget to go with the kind of salt that we're using right now. We don't have that in us. When we put up, out the bid, we thought it was gonna be closer to the same, if not 20,000 more, when we bought the sand. That's why we ended up buying the sand so the town could put out more. And it was, you know, the contractor wouldn't skim it, because the town owns it and they put it out. But all of a sudden, it's came to a salt game that the town cannot afford.
And I guess, I mean, how mu, in an, on the annual year, how much are we, how much salt have we been allotted to, you know, straight salt? Because we have the salt mixed into the sand.
Whatever it puts in, makes you win your sand, and then there's supposed to be 30 ton over there for emergency.
Extra, for the entire season, yeah, okay.
And what's been happening is you guys have been going through 90 to 110 tons, pretty quick.
I guess I'm, I'm not exactly sure, Steve's-
Was that 90 to 110 tons extra?
Yeah. That's after we already mixed it. That's what we used last year. And I've done a little asking around, whether or not, just get an idea. Because I, I can vouch, we, we have not used one speck of a full load of salt in this town. I've never said, hey, Chris, go load up with a full load of salt. We don't do that. Straight salt, straight salt, we do not do that. We don't, we, we mix it hot, and that's, that's the way we do it. We mix it in with the sand, so you have still the ratio of the sand, because there's a lot of bit more salt in it. And I've asked around, and there's, there's other towns that we have as Goodall, and they're right now, they're at 200 tons, same mileage of salt, of straight salt. Straight salt. Yeah. And they're, and they're telling me, I'm basically skimping by, using what I'm using now. And, I mean, I, I get, like, I talked to Steve, I get, yeah, we're using more salt. We had an early set of wind on, kicked off hard on us, and it boils down to where, you know, last year, everybody was kind of helping, in a sense, working together. And for us to use hot loads, it saves all my guys from being out there for 30 hours. I mean, once you get out there for 24 hours and you're rolling out there still, because if you watch us, our trucks are out there nonstop. DOT goes home, Croker goes home, but my guys stay in. The only time that we've ever done to do anything was last year, I pulled my guys off a road, because we couldn't see, for a couple hours.
It seems, so the thing to do is to get together with the Board of Selectmen, or Christine, and you guys, and Stevie, and sit down and discuss what's going on, you know, and see if you can find a-
I don't think we-
A way to work it out. It won't be solved tonight, it's too many, but I think Steve brought up good points. I think now the time to discuss it as a group and see what happened, and look back five years ago and bring it forward. As what we use, you've got to start someplace, so you might also start with a group discussion just about this. The works off, whatever you call it, but I think it needs discussed, not going back and forth like this, but at a meeting, just on this.
And I agree, and I agree with that, and I understand that, you know, one town is different from another town, and everybody's got their different municipal budgets, and it's all, no, no, no town's the same as another. But I would, I think I would like to pull some of our experience from similar towns with similar miles and see what they've been using historically for straight salt or salted sand, and then we, we could have a discussion to say, hey, look, we, we are on target, or holy cow, we are way over, way over target, and it's just simply got to stop, so, you know, let's, that discussion, I think, would be better suited, you know, right?
I'm not sure what the other towns are doing. All I know is you're way over budget for our town for using the salt.
Does this town, West Bath, do we have records, historical usage of salted sand going back several-
Town never had to supply it.
I know.
But you must have an idea based on the years that you did it, right? What you bought for salt, what you bought for sand?
That's, that's the worst year I ever had, I think we bought two, two tractor trailer truck load of salt.
But I think it would be important for you to bring the information to that meeting-
Right.
For a simple basis of what the town has spent.
But the town, I mean, yeah, but I-
And what is difference somewhat?
I understand we need to step it up, is what they're saying. We, you know, the town likes this salt. They like how the roads get cleaned out. I understand we've got to step it up. But what I'm saying is, somebody's got to be accountable for where all this money's coming from, how the salt is gonna- Mr. Goodall should not be able to call up the salt place and say, send me a load of salt.
If we, um-
It should be approved first.
We need to have, we need to have a workshop, we need to, we need to, to set up the schedule for the, this year, and this is also a very good time to start talking about what we need to budget for the following year, because we're in the budget season already. So as soon as we can find a mutually agreeable date, let's do this.
Well, the only thing I don't understand is, is where did we get this salt budget? We never had a salt budget, not even on the bid. Now all of a sudden, we got pure salt budget? I mean, where's this money coming from? Out of my budget? Because I couldn't tell you what the hell happened in my budget after I last hour ministered. They were so frigged up and fudged, they wasn't even funny. I couldn't even read my budget.
You weren't here during the budget process last year. I think people did the best that they could, and, and-
Yeah, I said, he did, he did a hell of a job.
And I didn't, um, I didn't see you again in the office until the end of July, August. So we were just there. I mean, there wasn't, there was, there was, you didn't communicate with me, and clearly I didn't communicate with you, so here we are in a fine kettle of fish. So let's get ourselves out of this kettle.
Sounds good to me.
And it might even be good to bring some of the other people that have concerns, that have done this work too, into that meeting, so that we can get this all geared up once and for all, and come up with a plan. Not just bring half of the group in, we get things worked out, it's Steve and you, and then we got someone sitting over here that has a lot to say. Invite them to the process.
It's not me. All, all I'm complaining about is my budget. When I go to West, and I need, right now, our roads are hell. And they're, they're gonna be harder to plow, harder to do everything if we don't get some power out there.
Well, I'm just saying, if people have an interest, don't sit back there and bitch and complain. Get yourself to this meeting, be part of the discussion.
This is an opportunity to attempt to straighten things out a little bit better than what they're perceived to be right now, so.
Because people have a lot to say, and so we get to this point here, and they seem to disappear.
And then everybody just disappears.
What kind of timing are we talking about for a workshop?
Sometime the next week.
Okay, because I think Steve and I need some answers tonight before we adjourn. Just basic answers, understanding that there's snow coming Friday.
Long weekend, lot of snow.
Lot of snow, so.
My personal opinion is that people have been happy with the roads. I've been happy with the roads, that until other things are settled out, then the, then the, then the contractor should continue doing as they have been doing, and then let's fix it.
I agree.
Okay, things going forward, I need to say this, because I know we're on camera, and I know people listen to this. I've never seen a business where we don't get receipts and invoices, and I think this is a poor way for us to be doing business. So I know we can't go, I don't, I'm not asking you for anything back, I just think going forward-
Well, there's gotta be invoices, because the money you're paying.
Well, I think it's, I think it's pretty poor that we're all of a sudden just buying salt and let it just keep on continuing. You know there's a problem, you're still saying, let it keep going.
No, we're saying, give us a week.
So this is what we did when we-
We're saying, give us a week, and let's take care of the snowstorm that's-
A week.
If you want, when, what do you mean?
All I know is when I voted for the selectmen to appoint us, the road commissioner job, I made a big mistake, because you guys are not doing your jobs.
What, what is it that you want, then, Steve?
I want to be able to have some authority, where you walk there and you can make your budget, and you can do your stuff, and not have people blaming us for the lack with your checkbook.
But you weren't here.
I was, I talked with him. Adam said, this is what we're doing, this is how we're gonna do it, and that was it. He said he had all authority from you guys. There was no talking, Adam. This is what he began to do with your budget, and that was that.
I have to say, I understand where Steve's coming from, because the question of authority and who is able to direct the contractor has been muddied over the years. Steve has a job to do. How do we evaluate him on the job that we have in writing that he's supposed to do if I'm in the middle of it, if the board is in the middle of it? You certainly have authority to direct him in his duties, but are those duties as they, are they still as they've been presented through the documentation that we have for winter road maintenance? So this goes a little bit beyond just the contractual-
Right, right.
Stuff that we're in with Goodall.
Sounds like we're two separate-
It is up to the selectmen to define, the selectmen really need to define his position, so that we could set goals and expectations, and so that he understands what his role is.
Right.
And so that I understand what mine is, or if I even have a role in road management.
Okay.
So.
Well, we can't accomplish that tonight.
We cannot do that tonight, that's for sure. So, um-
I have no problem with Goodall's doing what they've been doing, going on. I'm just saying is, we're gonna get in a bind where all of a sudden, we have no money to buy more salt, we have no money to replenish any sand, and rest is gonna come out of my road budget. This is all I'm trying to protect, because right now, we have given those guys an open checkbook to take care of our roads. When it's supposed to be, they put in the man hours, they use our salted sand, you get out there, if it takes them 36 hours, it takes them 36 hours. That's how our contract's written. Our contract to them is not written, we're nearly give you 100,000 ton for 1,000 ton of salt to take care of our roads, so your job is easy.
So, we need to-
Now, the next contract, it should be written out, okay, you get this much salt, they know what they're bidding on. But there was nothing said that we're gonna supply salt to these guys, just salted sand.
So we have another, we have a number of items left on the agenda. So what we need to do is to say, for this next storm, we'll go, we'll go with a status quo, but sometime in the next week, we all have to get ourselves together and figure this out, so that you know what's going on, so that the contractor knows what's going on, so that Christine knows what's going on, and it's clear.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I say, on the salt, leave it alone. If they need it, call me. I'll ask them why they think they need it, and then it's fine, use it, go ahead. Take three or four yards. Just don't let them go and make hot loads when they want, when they think, could one guy might think you need it, the other guy might not think you need it. Right now, we use them way too much stuff. And this year is gonna take a lot more than a week, a lot more than this weekend storm, to get straightened out. And before you know it, we're gonna be out of stuff, three or four, five storms.
Well, we don't know how many storms we're gonna get, so let's take care of the immediate issue now and, and start solving the, the problem as soon as we can. I don't see anything else how we can do things going forward, though, I don't.
And I guess, I mean, I have a lot of comments on this, but I think it's more appropriate in a workshop to go, to go over those. You know, and, but I will say, in the contract, it's at the professional discretion of the contractor. You guys selected us amongst a few people, and we're using our professional judgment. I think that we're gonna, you know, potentially agree to disagree on how much salt would need to be used, but when it becomes to a budget item, for you guys, I see what Steve's saying is, I mean, we're gonna write, you know, we've got to have some baseline to go, to go by, so, you know, I'm on board for trying to establish that.
Yeah, okay.
And in the meantime, I guess, you know, if we don't, we won't order any more loads of salt, certainly. I think that makes sense to, and how much do we have on hand up there now?
Probably got a lot. 60 tons.
So two, two trailer dump loads, okay, I mean, that's, that's gonna last for, for quite a while. I mean, we're not putting it down that thick, to my knowledge, you know?
Well, this year, we've been trying to keep enough in there to where if we need it, we're already ahead. Because last year, we fell behind where we weren't getting a 24-hour delivery. We'd be a week out, and we were pinching, because we didn't have no salt, and we really needed it.
But if, the 60 tons, that, that's plenty to hold us for, for a while, especially now, if it's a straight salt application, so.
Well, they ordered two loads, we only gave them one the last time.
Well, we're up to 60 ton, though, that's, that's quite a bit for right now, so.
How much salt we bought this year beyond the original purchase?
Because I'm not-
I think he's up 90 ton already, but he's got 60 in the shed, so that's good.
So we've only, what'd you say, used 37 so far, Steve was there?
Steve says something, what'd you say, about 37 tons?
47, from what I had from your slips.
I got that one slip from the one the guy hit, that did that.
So we'll use it sparingly, we can talk about it in a workshop, we can try to get, try to get some better direction on this, I'm good with that.
Could you supply, supply us with the copies of, of your invoices from, from Croker, just so that we have all that clear?
Absolutely, yeah, because, I mean, we get a slip every single loan, so I mean, we, we add it, so.
If we don't have slips, wouldn't that hurt us in an audit?
Um, no, not Croker's slips.
Well, you have a bill from him.
Right.
Of course. We have no, we have no way to fill inventory without, you know. Because that's how, we're supposed, that's the only way we have doing it, which is a very poor deal that we have there, is for what's going in and what's going out. I mean, the best way to know what's going out is what we get from slips from there. So it's nice to know what's going in there, and try to match it up some. And you're gonna have differences, probably, off of these guys, over 2,500. But you start getting a thousand yards differences, and there's obviously something going wrong.
You know, I think it'd be a good idea to get some kind of a historic last several years record of what we used for salt and sand.
I, Julie has it all up there. She showed me all the slips.
Okay, so we should compare those-
Yeah.
And see what's going on, and see what we spent the last two years versus three years before for sand and salt.
Right.
The idea, the whole salt shed, the town owning the salt, was to save the town money.
Right, and they know what we have.
To buy our own sand and salt, leftover sand and salt would be ours, we know what we have. It wasn't to go on board on sand and salt. Be reasonable about it, and if we get any, now's the time to straighten it out.
Right. And the, I've done some casual comparison of roads myself, so what, if you could bring to the, to the workshop some of the comparisons of how other towns are doing it, because-
Don't bring toxic. That's horrible.
We can do that, certainly.
I was just trying to set up the meeting, there should be somebody in charge of that.
I was going to ask, Christine, can you set up that meeting again? That would be awesome.
Maybe do it now, they're all here.
Yeah, what time of day are you looking at?
Well, everybody's not here, there's, there's a few that's been.
I know, but you got, the main players are here.
The main players are here.
And see if the others can make it, but I mean, you're all here, so why not, before this, take a day.
Thursday evening.
I don't know what time you typically hold those meetings, but what, I mean, I'm good, I'm good with pretty much whatever.
I was just throwing that date out there.
Must be the storm.
The day before the storm, yes.
I'll contact everybody.
Yeah, I think it's probably, yeah.
I need to double check our calendar, too, to make sure there's no conflicts, it's a busy time of year.
Yeah.
And I would imagine you would want to be here.
I don't necessarily need to be here, but I do think there's a few people that have come to me. And if they're gonna come to the selectmen and voice their concerns, I really believe that they need to be here and voice their concern or lose their voice.
Given the opportunity to speak.
Well, absolutely, yes.
I agree.
So it looks like snow removal is gonna be like Monday, Tuesday for next week? So those are probably not two good days to start.
Only on the home room.
Right, yeah.
If we, if we could meet Thursday, that would be optimal.
Like, three days from now, Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, what time?
Can you do that, five-thirty?
Yeah.
Five o'clock?
Five would be better, but.
Five, five better for you? Does that work for you?
I don't care, not that I'm driving the ship, but.
You can make one, okay?
Kathy, can you notify those people that you knew?
I think the people sitting in this room can do that. Spread the rumors, please. Get anybody who wants to, including people who like to have the roads plowed.
I do have an email listed from people that were concerned when the contract came out, so I can certainly.
Oh, good.
Reach out to.
Good, that'd be helpful. Good. Thursday, five P M. Okay.
Is somebody gonna post that on the website?
Yes, and I'll put an email blast.
Got it ready down, Jenny?
Got it ready up.
I think you're on my other list.
You've already forgot what day and time it is.
That's gonna be here, too.
Here, right here, five o'clock on Thursday.
Put it down on the road.
To the road. What is the.
Take it to the road.
What's the date on Thursday?
Seventeen.
Okay, so we will be meeting at five o'clock on the seventeenth to discuss the specifics and guidelines for road maintenance through the winter season. Two thousand, yeah, two thousand nineteen, yes. Okay.
Great, thank you.
I'll be ready, thank you.
We'll see you Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So, could I ask a quick question?
Of course you can.
So, who, who, if somebody needs something with town maintenance between now and, and Thursday? Say we have a snowstorm tonight, who do they go and see for the, the roadmates? Do they call Steve, or do they call?
Contractors in charge until we iron it out.
Okay.
Sounds like.
Fair enough.
Is that accurate?
I think so.
Okay.
But don't let there be any storms, okay?
Right, yep.
Ladies, the contractors who's up there's in charge of the snow shouldn't have to call me anyways, they know their job. That's not all I'm asking for here, Adam. The, the, what I'm asking here is, let's control this budget we have for salt and sand. There's nothing else wrong with what's going on. I don't know if you don't understand the picture, what I'm trying to put across, but it's the budget we're using. It's nothing to do with how Goodall's doing it, they're doing their job, they're doing a hell of a job.
Right.
That's not the issue. The issue is, where is this town coming up all this money for the salt all of a sudden? And we're supposed to be saving money, and we're spending fifty thousand dollars. Last year was forty thousand more, this year it's fifty-one thousand more.
And that's what we're.
That's why I wanna know what's happening.
That'll be the workshop on Thursday.
That's the workshop.
What's I got to do with the workshop though? Workshop is, where should we use the salt?
See, we're, we're not carrying this information in our heads, we have to.
We have to, we have to.
We have to look and.
Find the information and.
We have to verify what you're talking.
We have to get the history, we have to, there's, there's facts and stuff involved before we can make any kind of same decision. And I hope we're sane. And it's a good time to bring those recommendations of, you talked about how much salt should be used. Bring those recommendations also, because that's.
What's it now, now, though, it's not in our budget to be doing this.
Well, we have to get, if you wanna get a handle on it.
That's for the next contract.
Well, it's, I'm sure if the selectmen decide what the mix should be and how much is used a little bit, discrepancy there, you know? It can be dealt with somewhat now without going a new contract, that's what you want. If you got a problem right now, you might as well try to adjust it right now and work on it right now, exactly. So let's not wait, let's do it as soon as we can.
Tons to, to, to last. With that case in hand.
So you brought it up, Steve, and I think you're right, it should be done, so let's deal with it.
And all, all aspects that you have, that you have issues with, bring us a list. And we may not be able to get them done on Thursday, all of them, but we need to know specifically and, and, and how we're gonna, how we're going to solve the issues.
Well, the biggest thing is, I'm, I'm basically just trying to find out where my job is around here now. Because I don't know, I go to the guy that's in charge of our plowing our roads, I go to him and he, I tell him to back off on the salt. He says he ain't doing nothing unless he, other from the town minister.
We have, um, plans going forward for all of the town employees to be meeting with the town administrator and the board of selectmen. And all, there are a number of discrepancies in lots of people's job descriptions between what it says on paper and the way that we've been doing the jobs. And it's time we got those filled with and straightened out and rewritten and, or traditions reincorporated. Because we have a new town administrator, we have the opportunity to look at the way that the systems are working and not working and fixing what can be fixed. And then there's some things, we're just gonna have to live with each other and figure it out as we go.
Yeah, that's fair enough, I understand that, that's exactly right, I just.
If your job title was road commissioner, then you should be somewhat involved with roads out there.
Exactly. Now, I, I feel like it got taken away from the road commissioner, as long as it was a appointed position and not elected anymore, because.
Well, you, you were appointed for several years, and we have a new regime, so called new town administrator, so let's go forward. If you gotta make changes, Steve, now's the time to talk about it.
Although we did before the selectmen, and I don't think you were here, Peter gave the town administrator permission to call you to remove a toilet.
A what?
But it's been taken care of.
Oh, the snake was in?
Ellis took care of it.
No, no.
Oh, what about the one that the snake was in?
Someone dumped one. That's hard to tell, we're looking at for somebody to pick it up and we said, call station.
Julia, rest area.
But, but if all means to you, if you see issues with your job description per se, and how you think it can be, the system can be improved, bring it up. And maybe not this next meeting, but another meeting on just the road commissioner's official duties, as Christine has indicated, to have a meeting with you.
Well, the biggest thing is, is I don't wanna scare the town or anything, but we're losing the false point road. After, we gotta do something with it, there's sides on that. You drive down through there after the snowstorm and it rains, you got puddles almost the whole length of it, the road is giving out.
Okay, well. So the other thing we suggested is you meet with Christine, maybe you and Christine meet, and then she can present it to the board of selectmen. So that would be a good place to start. Right.
Yep, so I just wanted, I'm just trying to say, there ain't money in there to blow wherever we want. We need to put some catching to the.
Now's the only time to bring it up.
I'd like to just say one thing, when Adam has the job, we communicated with Adam almost daily, through email, texts, telephone calls. So Steve may not always be in this office, but there's always open communication. So I just think that maybe people that are hearing talk would get the wrong idea, and I want them to know that he is very involved. So, there is communication there.
Okay, can we move to the next item on the agenda?
I hope so.
All right. Well, Steve may, again, if this is of your road commission, you may wanna be here for the next couple.
Yeah, yeah.
You're all set?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick around.
Can I just throw one wrench in?
Sure.
I think that Mark might have a question about winter road maintenance.
Can I buy salt up to the town cost?
From the town?
Or go get it myself?
Oh, you mean for the.
For the good price.
The school.
For the municipality price.
Yeah. Mark, we pay for it, but we would order it so that he would receive the lower price.
Well, I don't see any reason why not, I don't.
Okay.
Why not?
Yeah, okay, as long as it's good with you.
I mean, it saves them a lot, and if he is doing the schools and stuff.
Right.
I mean, they might, they might even wanna think of an next budget to put that right in up the sand jet, too. Because, you know, that school packed a lot, people fall and get hurt. It was foolish to make them get hurt.
Mark, it might be good for you to start figuring out what to use the year, so that we can put that to us.
Why don't you just give everybody an open checkbook?
Why not?
Thanks, Steve.
Want to?
Really, Steve?
Okay, so about the Birch Point Road status updates, Christine, you have this for us?
Oh, yes, okay, um, I contacted Pine Tree Engineering. And the preliminary cost estimate for us, the buy note is going to be the same as was quoted in March two thousand eighteen. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We did sign an extension for the work to be done to October of two thousand twenty. It doesn't mean that the project will go out that far, but that is the drop dead date for construction. For the grant funding, I should say. And Birch Point Road shore stabilization, we received an estimate for, or a proposal from Pine Tree for the engineering in July. That was never approved, or if it was approved, Pine Tree was never notified, so they didn't move forward with the work.
Okay, so you should probably reapprove it and notify it. If we want to keep Birch Point Road from falling into the sea. This is the.
I remember, I remember discussing it, didn't we agree to go with it?
I think we did.
It's possible.
They never got notified?
Yeah.
July was, July was kinda crazy.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was busy time.
Yeah.
We did approve that.
So we have not done any engineering on that?
No.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's re-approve it, so.
My second.
It is, it takes a couple of years' time to get it done, time to go through, have it called and everyone else.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to reapprove, and we have a second and further discussion. All of those in favor? Any discussion?
Uh, just a question on Sabino. The grant money is good until two thousand twenty? Is the permit process done?
No.
When does Pine Tree think the permit process will be done?
They said they're in the midst of it, so.
Well, at some point, we're gonna print out the bid, and it seems only two months, we can work on that.
Right, I will continue to talk with Rob on a regular basis and see what his timeframe is, but my understanding is that they just.
Well, the, the catch is, at some point, either this budget year or worst case, next budget year, we're gonna know what the budgets are.
Right, right.
So he's gotta.
Step it up.
Right.
Yep. I'm sure, and now the government shutdown, so there's nothing you can do anyhow, but that's just at one.
Well, when I contacted without.
I think, I think, I, I've got the sense through overseeing this process that actual hands-on construction ain't gonna happen until next budget season, not this coming.
Well, that was based on the permit process.
Yeah, and they told us that it was a good solid year to get through that, you know, and there's no, no way around it. You just have to wait. And then, like you say, that they have their implications.
So the best shot we have is a, a year from this coming, July or August, probably.
Probably, yeah.
Well, as long as the permit process, we can get it up next.
And, and I have a question about that grant, doesn't the grant have to, the grant is awarded and, and we're locked in, but do we have to do anything to renew it every year?
Um, yeah, so we just did that recently.
Okay.
So it has been extended, so we're all set until October of two thousand twenty.
Yeah, okay, good.
But the, I believe the work only has to be started, doesn't have to be completed to be eligible to accept a grant.
Correct.
I believe.
But the catch is, we have, I think, two months, only two months to work on, July and August, and that's it.
The bad's spawned in.
Right. All right. We are updated. Hill Road excavation request.
I'm assuming that's for me, for Lovejoy's place?
Yes. Your name is Jeremy.
I'm like.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear Jeremy on there, so I was just, I didn't know if there was another one going on.
No, we're talking about the one requested by Jeremy Warf.
Okay.
Who attended this meeting to discuss this request.
Jeremy here?
Present. So, uh, I have some clients on the, on the hill road at Sue Lovejoy's old place there in the Cove in Long Cove. They're very familiar, right after Secus.
Literally, again, their cove.
Yeah.
Is that the old?
The white cottage.
The old white cottage, yep. Um, they currently have a, a holding tank on site, and they would like to do a septic system to make it usable year round. Okay? And to do so, they don't, they, they need to go offsite to put a septic system, and they don't, they don't need any of the setbacks in the area. So, we are proposing to excavate across Hill Road and put the septic system across the street. And I spoke to Steve about it, and he told me that I had to come speak to you folks about excavating across the hill road.
When we first discussed this somewhat casually a few weeks ago, um, once now. You, you found an ordinance that said something about what happens when roads are newly paved.
In two thousand and four, the selectmen put forth a policy statement restricting excavation within a five-year period on any town road that has been paved. Now, that doesn't mean that it can't be excavated, but the selectmen need to give permission to do so. And then the contractor would need to comply with twenty-three MRSA subsection three-three-five-one to restore the road to its previous condition.
Uh, Jeremy, is the, the current holding tank, is that, is that legal?
Um, it's grandfathered, it's not legal.
That's my department. It's legal, and I would honestly highly recommend that he does it, because we've had a lot of trouble with the holding tag there over the years. And it's gone into Long Cove and caused a lot of problems with the plants. So my opinion would be to let them do it. And maybe you could blame me, because I think several years ago, I suggested that to the oldest, so. Tim, my discussion.
Well, we make a better solution to the occasional pollution problem, which shuts the cove down.
Right.
And they can't harvest shellfish.
Yep.
And it's a lot longer than the, than the initial issue.
No, you can shut down right now, that end of it, permanently, until that is a known fix for that system.
So it's legally non-conforming, and they're, are they under, they're not under any order to put in a new septic system from?
They're, they're not at this time, no.
Okay.
But, I mean, the, the town, um, years ago, we, we went around and replaced a lot, a lot of the OBD systems.
Lots of them, yeah.
And, uh, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this would almost fall into this, kind of the same category. You know, where we're trying to preserve our, our shoreline.
Wow.
Can, can that nice new road bed be restored to its?
Original luster?
It was so pretty.
Yep. How many years has it been suspended, three years?
It's two and a half.
Two thousand sixteen it was paved.
I guess the biggest thing that I think is to make sure it's put back exactly where it was. He's needs to babysit it for at least a year, and he's settling anything else. And I don't think you, you will see a big thing, but you can't just, you can't just say, okay, yeah, go ahead and do it, fill it in, and not have him respond. fill it in, and not have him responsible for it for, and if you don't have a problem, say, like, if it's five years is up, have him be responsible for it for two years, and then the five years is up, and then it's nothing else. I mean, if you give him the extra time to do it, and then you want to make him responsible for that ditch that goes across that road for two years, I think you should let him do it.
So if we, we can set up the specifications for how it should be restored and how long.
Actually, it's defined in.
It's already defined, but.
So it's twenty feet from the furthest outside edges of the cut.
Have you seen this?
It's, I'm assuming it's the MDOT standard.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, but we can, we set it up so we can set how long the responsibility for the maintenance and the, having the road be in its original condition for X number of years beyond.
That, that's what, that would be my recommendation, is to have him, when the five-year mark is up, when it was paved, he needs babysit that one ditch, not both the roads, that one ditch he does across there. If it settles, if it bumps, if it heaves, he's responsible for it.
Okay.
Unless you want to stretch it and say, you know, three hundred feet this way and three hundred feet that way, you're responsible.
That's, that's defined.
We've got the, we've got the. Selectmen adopted that in two thousand and four.
Yep.
However, a comprehensive plan addresses, um, the endless search for, uh, overboard discharges, and it's the town's, um, goal to eliminate them as they come up, even though, as far as we know, they're, they're all eliminated until we find another one.
Well, this is, this is a holding tank.
Well, it's the same idea.
Well, yeah, if it leaks.
Yeah, same idea.
So that's just not treated.
Um, at least in the world, according to me, it's the same idea. So I, I think that we can sidestep, make an exception to following our policy, which sounded, it appears to me to be, to accommodate the situation and to, uh, being consistent with a comprehensive plan and allow this situation to go, with the condition that, uh, they keep on the maintenance of it for however many years that the road commissioner recommends to be attached. It's just me, Charlie.
Seems reasonable to me. As, I mean, uh, the, the important thing, there, there are two important things. One is that the road be restored, and the other is that the marine resource be protected. So we can accomplish both, so it would seem that this would be a time to make an exception.
We would, yeah, we would make an exception, yeah.
Next week?
Yeah. It'll, it'll be a little bit.
I, I wouldn't, that's another recommendation, I would wait until spring before.
Would be the recommendation.
Right.
Yes, please.
So how, how long will it take?
Oh, it'll be all done in a day.
Oh, okay.
Will the road be shut down?
It would not be.
One lane?
Yeah, one lane, it'll still be passing, yeah.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
So was the recommendation, I think I read two different things, two years or five years after, what was I?
Whatever it, whatever is left on the five years, and it's already been three years going by, so it'll be two years that he needs to babysit that trench.
So it'll be through, um, two thousand twenty-one, right?
Whatever he does, it's on good view?
Why, that doesn't matter to me.
The only question I have, you are going to sleeve it, so we don't have to do this again.
It'll be, it'll be sleeved, yeah.
Did you want an actual excavation permit drawn up? I can do that for the next meeting.
That does seem like a really good idea.
Okay, that would be the way out.
That's what I was wondering.
Rather than trying to put it in the form of a question.
Right, sorry.
That's something we need to get together with too, because any more of these live taps and stuff, we need to have something written in paper, responsibilities.
We'll get there, we'll nail it down.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Well, we have street opening permits now, don't we? The driveway permits, it's the same thing, working in the town right away.
Yeah, but no, that's just for calving, that's not, nothing to crossing roads or going out into the roads. That's just basically a new, new road, a new, uh, we don't have nothing written up right now in bylaws or anything, except for payment, five years, as if, so many wanted to come in and dig across, go to our water main.
Permission.
We don't have nothing to do with it.
Direct, Christine.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah.
We'll have a motion to, uh, for the policy. And to, at the same time, to, um, uh, ask Christine to put together
excavation.
the excavation permit, and then we can vote on the excavation permit next meeting, which will empower the project.
Okay, so, but the excavation permit, um, a, a street opening, I think probably Steve ought to be involved in that, because he knows the parameters on.
Oh, he will be.
Okay.
Or together.
Okay.
So that we only have to do it once.
Yeah, right there, we're just gonna give ourselves the authority to be able to allow this.
Okay.
And then we'll deal with all the rest of it next time.
Understood.
After Christine does her, sprinkles her pixie dust on.
Okay.
Do you have a motion, Charlie? Does someone want to say, so moved?
So.
All right, so Peter made the motion, or did you make the motion?
Peter did.
Okay. Peter made the motion, I'm going to. We've got a second. Any further discussion on permission for the, um, exception to the policy statement? Here and none, all in favor? Excellent. And so we'll vote on the actual excavation permission next meeting. All right. All right, so, next on the agenda is the West Bath Development Corporation's status.
Yes, um, I did a little research regarding the corporation and found out through the Bureau of Corporations that they had been administratively dissolved for some time. Uh, this, of course, was formed for Wing Farm. I think we're at the point where the selectman might want to make some decisions about whether or not to just recognize the dissolution of West Bath Development Corporation and not pursue reinstatement. Unless you feel that we need the corporation's input for maintenance of the road.
Well, that was my concern.
And I spoke a little bit with Steve Callis about this.
What's his recommendation?
Well, he thinks it's time that the selectman could just take over the decision-making around Wing Farm. But I don't want to speak for him, we can certainly bring it up again next time, it'll be a meeting.
Because we, we kept the, we kept it together because legally, they were title holders, they owned it.
Right.
And then, um, they in turn would make the final decisions on, in, everything that happened. We just kept it together in case anything, um, needed, legally needed to be done. But the Wing Farm is since sold.
But what legal obligations do we have towards that road?
We own it.
The talents, the subject.
Exactly, the talent.
Yeah.
So what are the obligations? Is it something we're gonna have to repair? Is it something we're gonna have to file going forward?
Um, we're not responsible for winter road maintenance, we are however responsible for, um, drainage.
The Wing Farm's not part of winter maintenance?
Pardon me?
Wing Farm Road is not part of winter maintenance, even though we own the road?
By, by agreement with the, with the purchaser, right?
I applied it last year, and all this year, and years before.
Gotcha.
So does, Steve, do you see any, I don't know how long this road is?
It's, what I see is, is gonna be an issue down, down the road, they, they just hauled it probably a million yards of gravel up there, piled it up. Now, if we don't get in there, put posted signs up in the springtime, I mean, if they stop hauling all that dirt, they haul in there, out of there, we could lose the road, and it's gonna cost us to repair it. So there's gonna be something, I mean, I don't know, I think they're going way overboard on what if I was storing that much material across that road, running those big trucks constantly, and, you know, we'd like, we opened a big window there, too, it's like.
I think that from the discussion, we're covered, and I don't remember the specifics, I'll have to go back and check. But I think, I think the purchaser, again, when he and Procker made that arrangement, allowed for the repair of the road, so that the town is not on the hook for that. I think that's true, I can check that out again.
That would be good.
That would be good, that would make, you know, we don't want to get caught.
Yeah, it's, um, my recollection of the expectation is that that road is gonna take a pounding. And, uh, that, in a nutshell, in exchange for all the dirt work and all that stuff, it's gonna be restored back to what it once was.
Is it bonded? I mean, that's, that, that's great, that they had this agreement, but where's the, where's the town lying all this? I know it's great.
I don't know for sure where we are in, in.
They want to look at maybe some type of a bond for the, for the time that they're, they're doing the project? You know, for the town of West Bath, for any damages?
I don't know, I, I don't know.
I know you don't know, that's why I'm, that's why I'm telling you.
This is something we need to look into.
Okay.
I, I know that would bring up other questions.
Yeah, my, just my concerns, I don't want us to be responsible for a million dollars worth of repairs to this road that isn't, it's our road, but it's not our road.
Right.
If even is, I mean, it is, I mean, I don't know how good the city is saying it is our road.
We have some liability from.
It's a road to nowhere, where, where do we use that road to go?
It goes nowhere.
Well, it goes to seven lots, goes to taxpayers.
So, in this whole process, I know I'm bringing up a can of worms, shouldn't we have just signed up on the route to? We couldn't, we couldn't. We would never have been able to sell it.
Title is bad, bad, bad. The, uh, what do you call it, the, um, King's, King's Highway, um, somebody just arbitrarily decided this is gonna be King's Highway, and it, that there's no history that that is indeed what it is.
It costs us tons of legal fees to figure it out.
Yeah, so, um, we're, we decided we were just much better off to not sell it, just hang on to the damn title.
There's also complications with the, uh, the grant money, too, that's out in the town, in the road.
And the.
Specifically, grant money tied us up, too.
Yeah.
Did that ever get switched for the usage?
Yeah.
It did. So you can put pretty much anything off it, and now it's, it's still gonna be.
It's commercial?
No, it has to be commercial.
It has to be industrial, commercial for the original.
We, we held our end of the EDA agreement.
Of the grant.
Whereas, whereas our neighbor was.
Might, might not have so much.
Yeah.
So I agree with wanting to get out of this, I'm just wondering if there's anything we need to check before we do.
We should have spelled out the, uh, the transfer.
Yeah, and I think this is helping me formulate some questions that I need to ask, and I, I intended to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, so that we could wrap it up.
I, yeah, I guess.
The other part of it is the Economic Development Committee, and whether or not we need to continue to have that committee in place for any reason.
I guess can, can the selectmen, can the board of selectmen take, um, control and authority over that project without an act of Congress to do it?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, because, because the corporation doesn't technically exist anymore.
Yeah.
Right.
Appointed by the board.
And I called the state, and as far as the state's concerned, it's not recognized, and, um, we would actually have to apply if we wanted to.
Yeah, make a new one.
Reform that, and.
Yeah.
There's no point in that.
No.
So, would probably be appropriate to have a mo, a motion to, um, officially recognize the end of the West Bath Development Corporation, or something to that effect.
Dissolve.
Does, to, to recognize its dissolution or something?
Yes, to recognize the dissolution.
Yeah, as of eight twenty-eight seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Any further discussion, and you'll check on all those under L L. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go. All of us in favor? All right.
Uh, one more thing about the, the Wing Farm, we, we also have a sewer line in the, in the roadway.
Yes.
I believe, I believe we own, um, and we don't have a public works department, nor a sewer department that, that has to be taken care of.
Sewer line actually belongs to the water people, I think that was.
It does not.
We had this discussion a while ago.
The, the sewer, the water department owns the water main in there, because they own the hydrant, but the sewer line, the sewer main, that we're gonna be responsible to maintain, the town actually owns, because it's on the West Bath. There's, there's nothing written between Bath Public Works to the town of West Bath to maintain any of the sewer.
Thank you for looking at Canada Rams.
Yeah, well, I'm just throwing it out there, eventually it will be a problem.
I was in there, we're gonna take care of all the infrastructure, what's it gonna cost, any more?
Yeah.
Remember that, twenty years ago?
Well, if you have the minutes, you might build a, might have an argument there, they can take it over, but as of right now, they, they're not responsible for it.
So in the future, if something went wrong, what are we possibly looking at by now?
Substantial. And as you gain lots in there, as of right now, there's water infiltration into the sewer system, on the, somewhere on the lots in there, so that will have to be.
Separate the roads, but sell the sewer?
Addressed at some point.
Well, we'll have to look into that, we need to know.
How do you sell a liability?
You know?
You know?
Let's put that on the agenda for another meeting.
I'm just throwing it out there, you guys want to write it down, talk about it, eventually it's gonna come out.
It's good to know, because like you said, eventually it's gonna, we're gonna forget about it, and all of a sudden, we're gonna have this huge bill and liability.
Yeah.
And we're also paying for a lot of hydrants up through the, this one man's controls the whole thing.
Just off the top of anybody's head, did Lot Six sell with that parcel, or do we still have that?
No, Lot Six, I believe, sold with, and.
With the restrictions?
With the restrictions still in place.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to move to business edit number five? And, um, this is about the, our ongoing contract with the Mid Coast Humane Society, so that we can take care of stray cats and dogs. Anything more we need to know about that?
Just that it increased from a dollar per capita to a dollar fifteen, and next year, it will be a dollar thirty per capita.
For the, um, for the people, not the dogs and cats.
Exactly. People capita.
Is this just the, the contract, or the, or the party request?
This is the contract, the annual contract.
This is, this is not the same as, as the contribution to the Humane Society. So are we going to approve this, or are we gonna start our own kennel?
Please approve it.
Oh, I'm thinking we're all gonna go to Christine's, probably. She lives in Bristol.
Exactly.
I think that, that's really, when you look at increases, that is a very small increase. So I think we need to approve the contract, the extension of the contract.
Yeah, all I need is the motion, there's only Wing Farm signature, so I can.
So, are we ready for motion? Do we need to discuss those? I make a motion, we approve the new agreement for services with Mid Coast Humane, increasing to one fifteen in two thousand nineteen, and one thirty in two thousand twenty.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Business item six, the Six Rivers New England Mountain Bike Association Memorandum of Understanding. This is a follow-up on the new bike path, I think.
Mountain Bike Association, we don't have anybody to make a speech to?
No, he said we could certainly come and have a tour.
Because my concern is, what trails are we gonna be using in this?
The snowmobile trails. That is my understanding.
It's in the tree.
Yes, I didn't know if perhaps you wanted to review the memorandum, and then I can have another future meeting, or certainly...
Well, my concern is, is, and I can't think of the name, maybe you can help me out, the current guy that takes care of the trails.
Me, right.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure that they, I'm gonna keep the trails, and it's good shape and assist with what the current members have already done. I would like to see somebody come in.
I suppose on courtesy, we are, these lawyers, who are the snowmobile club, who maintains trails, they're okay with this. And the other thing, this is complex. This isn't motorcycles, right?
Right, right.
Is that the same group?
Say, keep your voices down, it's recording.
Oh, oh, I thought you said is it.
So should we just simply table that and invite a representative to come to the meeting?
I think it's important, um, if they want to do something like this, that they should come and present it.
Okay, they did come before the board once before, so I wasn't sure how much information you covered at the time. You want somebody here from the snowmobile club as well?
Yeah, they did.
Well, it's not the snowmobile club. This is when the ATV club asked for permission over by Austin Ridge.
Permission to ride at night with lights mostly in the winter. What is that?
Is that for the bikes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So to me, that, what does that mean? That's concerning.
It's a check yes or no situation.
Is that a standard form of presentation?
The last question on the page, permission to ride a bike with lights mostly in the winter.
Well, that's for snowmobiles.
That's not, what does that mean?
Yeah, it's for the bikes.
Right, so, I think it...
To get from a snowmobile, I'm just gonna discuss this.
Yeah, I think...
Well, because it gets that so early.
Yeah.
But how do you ride bikes on those trails?
I just want to make sure...
We're not approving that.
These mountain bikes are a particular question.
We're not like that.
Yeah, pretty rugged, yeah. But I think, I think it would be a good idea if we had somebody come and chat with us.
Along with Matt?
Yes. Along with Matt, for, if we could invite him to attend the next meeting.
Because the thing with Matt, he comes in and lets us know everything they're doing, and he does put so much time into it.
He does, he does.
Yeah. Courtesy, I'm not anything else.
Right.
Yeah, the representative from the mountain bike club, his name is Alex Wong, so I will put him down.
Yes, I, I think, all things being equal, we liked the idea of the trail that they were, um, developing, but it'd be nice to, before we sign up on it, we did, to talk to him again.
Well, you gotta be careful with how we end it, talking with the other trails we already have.
Exactly.
A lot of times, these guys want to shut our trail way off, make their own trail.
That's it.
They did the same thing in behind Hyde School. These guys got bike trails in there, and you can't even ride a wheel or anything through there no more. They just pretty much took it all over.
Really? Well, we don't want that to happen.
Right, so you gotta be careful with these groups, and...
Talk to him live in person. Business item number one. The Comprehensive Plan Committee and Election Clerk Appointments. So, we have Jeremy Warff, who has offered to be on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and Dawn Lee, who has, um, elected, offered to be on an election clerk. Shall we appoint them?
Yeah, my personal thanks goes out to both of them for stepping up.
Indeed.
We need help in both areas.
Indeed.
I, um, probably, we can do these together, can't we? Um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jeremy Warff to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and Dawn Lee, appoint her, um, as an election clerk. Is that what you're saying, election clerk?
Yes.
Yeah.
You have a second?
I have a second, though.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy has already stepped up in the line to a meeting prior to his appointment, just to get a head start on it.
No, thank you very much. It's, uh, you'll, you'll enjoy it once you do it.
I'm sure you will, Peter. Thank you.
It's also a good, um, real good basis for your work, but playing the board, it's really solid. It, it is.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, that goes for you.
Good night.
And, I'm gonna have a page for other. Number eight. Number eight. Oh, yes, I'm, I'm trying to forget that one. Uh, business item eight, the annual financial audit. Ah, yes. Have we finally received the results of our audit?
We received a preliminary audit on Thursday, for which I prepare my management's discussion and analysis, which I have done, and I sent that to Brewer's office on Friday. We do not have our final audit yet, so...
So business, under business item eight in your notebooks, you have the note, a discussion regarding whether or not to request proposals for audit services, and I would be very much in favor of requesting proposals for audit services at this point. We did not get adequate service this year from our auditor.
Not last.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wasn't it quite a while on the, on last year?
I'm just speaking from having been more closely involved, and, and having had conversations, at least one and possibly two, about when the audit was going to be completed, and then when we were going to get our reports. And for us to not have them done in a timely manner, and then to not have the report done in a timely manner, I, I'm very disappointed. I think we need to see if we can get better service from somebody else.
Understood. I agree.
Well, it's, it's, um, what, how, what's the price tag in the audit and, and the auditor?
Eighty-five hundred?
For the whole year?
Somewhere, yeah.
For the whole year?
Somewhere in that range.
Or is that just the audit part of it?
That's just the audit part of it, but it encompasses the entire amount.
As well as the school?
No, they're additional.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
It's a big price tag.
If you're including the school, it's double that.
Sixteen grand.
We're not even gonna go near that one.
Right.
That's not our authority.
No, but the, the prices.
But the, the, and the...
Well, we have to come up with the money, of course. It's a school.
And just to have a different perspective, we've been using Brewer for a long time. It would be nice to get someone else's opinion of how we handle our finances.
I understand it's healthy to, to change periodically.
And they may have some things that we're not doing, that we could do better.
I, I had a, I had a conversation with somebody, I don't know, who lived in the last year, and, and I have it in the back of my mind that we should consider, um, at least putting it out to bid, not changing auditors, and lo and behold, here it is. I think, I think we should at least put a RFP out for...
Now's the time to think about it, since we wanna have the auditor here July first, so...
Yeah.
I mean, we're going into the budget season. I don't have an audit.
Yeah.
I have a little bit of a problem with that.
Yeah.
Could be a big problem.
Yeah. And I would like to, I would like to have the commit, the audit done before we go to commitment. That just makes sense to me, because we're kind of flying blind.
Yeah.
And, and couldn't, couldn't get them here, so, um, RFP.
Yeah.
So, motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Then, all in favor? Okay, that was number eight. Nine is other. Do we have an other other?
Um, we do have a little bit of an other. I was reviewing the land use ordinance the other day, and I'm concerned about some language within the ordinance that suggests that we have a building inspector, and that we issue occupancy permits. I'm not sure that that's the case. Talked with Ellis briefly about that. Um, if we don't actually have a building inspector certify that issues occupancy permits, we need to take that language out of the land use ordinance.
Ellis isn't here, dude.
Yes, he is.
Well, it's, it's moved.
Usually, what this, it's the name. I mean, code enforcement officer, building inspector. I mean, I guess there's, to me, they seem the same.
Did we ever give out occupancy permits?
We've only give out occupancy permits on commercial.
Okay, that's what I thought.
On commercial things. Other than that, we don't give any occupancy permits.
It's not defined in the ordinance in such a way that you would distinguish between commercial and non-commercial. I'm very concerned about liability.
Yeah.
Because we have a population of under two thousand per current census figures, we're not even required to, um, inspect for the fire code, so...
Yeah, right.
It's, this, if it's on the change, this has to put the planning board through.
Yes.
Two, three, tell me.
Yeah, I just want to put everybody on notice that there's, there could be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was, there was quite a few items that we've jotted down that, that needs to be addressed, and I, I believe that was actually one of them. Jay Pears came up.
Oh, good. I'm glad.
Yeah.
We may need to do some workshop with the planning board, do about all that kind of stuff sometime in the next few months.
Yeah, I know the, the, there's a, maybe some soft spots there, you know, between last time we met with the administrator. Um, we made some plans, or I should say, we the, the, the board did, and, and they really didn't go very far and...
Right.
Went, went elsewhere, so it was, I think it would be very helpful for the, the two committees to, to get together and actually see where each other's at.
Yeah, again.
Yeah.
A new administrator means it's a good time to, to look at the systems and see what works and what doesn't work, and what we hadn't even thought of before.
Yeah.
So, we'll get it on the agenda. Is that our other other?
That's it.
Okay, and we, we're going to do, do an executive session if we could have a request.
A little good, a little other. Did you have the chancellor check out the frozen boat situation?
Not yet.
Okay.
I reached out to Doug Alexander, and he said that there are none on our side of New Meadows Lake, and the boats over by Austin Ridge are on private property, and he has warned the, the fishermen over there that they might be, in the future, not be able to use that private property if they didn't pick up their boat, so they were put on notice, basically, to the consequence of...
Because it's pretty much frozen in, uh...
But as far as West Bath goes, we don't have anything that we're responsible for, according to Doug.
Well, the only thing is, I think the stream in the mill pond, if they aren't taken care of, they're gonna float around and eventually make it through the culvert, and who knows what, what's gonna happen there?
I'll double check with him on Mill Pond, but he was pretty confident that we didn't have anything in the water.
There are three of them.
There are.
On the bank. Oh, they're frozen in now. They're frozen in, in the water now.
Yeah.
Snug on the bridge.
Okay.
Okay.
I request that we enter executive session pursuant to Title One MRSA four oh five six A for the purpose of discussing the personal order.
One second. We need a adjourned, um, for this portion.
Okay.
As we enter into the day, uh...